The first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Mr. Taylor, are you ready?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've received apologies from councillors Jenny Els, Jill Hargreaves, Val Henry, Wyatt Ramsdale, Stephen Reynolds, David Round, Jeanette Stennett, Stuart Stennett, John Ward, Ross Belland, Liz Wheatley and Sam Pritchard.
Any others that anyone might be aware of? Thank you. Item two on the agenda are declarations of interest. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interests to declare?
None received in advance, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations, members? If not, then we'll move on to item three. May I now ask the Leader to present the minutes of the special executive held earlier this evening? All members were sent the executive agenda, so will have had the opportunity to read the reports, and copies of the executive minutes have been tabled. Leader.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I'm pleased to move the minutes of the special executive held earlier this evening, and I believe that I have a seconder.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, there are two items in part one of the minutes with recommendations to council. The first is community infrastructure levy, the adoption of the charging schedule. Madam Mayor, after much work over a long period of time, I think it fair to say that it's a really exciting time for the council with the approach, the adoption, hopefully this evening, of SIL or Community Infrastructure Levy. We had a successful examination earlier this summer, and by implementing this levy, this really does ensure that, following on from the feedback of many of our residents, we can ensure that we have a charging schedule in place that really helps us as we move forward and provides, and we can provide along with the building, the right level of infrastructure that everybody within our borough wants to see. I'd like to especially thank not just the portfolio holder but also the officers and the ONS committee for their work over a period of time on this, and I'm sure that there are a number of speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers? Mr. councillor Follows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm, this is the right point for me to be speaking about SIL, just I don't want to be talking at the wrong time, or are we talking about something else?
That's what was on the agenda item we're on.
My issue, so SIL, I agree it's exciting, I agree that it does solve a number of problems. However, my excitement ends at the point where there are concerns. So I have two particular concerns I would like the Leader to comment on if possible. And so my first, by not passing SIL anywhere close to when we passed LPP1, we've seen a significant upswing in major planning applications. Certainly JPC members in the room will note that we have been at many, many more sessions in the last few months than in my first few months here as a councillor. I suspect that is because many applicants are submitting applications in order to have them considered under 106 rather than SIL. In some parts of the borough therefore, particularly in Godding, and I would cite an application in my own ward for 262 houses, which has already been submitted and therefore will avoid SIL, that some parts of the borough will now not have any applications of any note to be considered under SIL at all. So in fact, a lot of the money that we're considering here is actually quite hypothetical, if not outright fictional. So will we actually see any of the money for this? My second point, we've recently seen some developers, in fact many developers, trying to avoid their affordable housing numbers by submitting viability assessments and using some of the other tricks of the trade. How can we be certain that one under SIL, when there is significantly higher charges to be levied, that every single applicant will not now file a viability assessment to argue that it does not need to deliver any affordable housing? In such circumstances, how are we going to deliver any affordable housing in Waverley? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I'm delighted that this was passed at examination. It was quite a difference when we first started looking at the figures, and I think it still is, from most of the other boroughs in Surrey. But at the same time, when I went round to talk to most of the different parishes and towns, it was quite clear that the one thing that all of our residents were concerned about was infrastructure. So we managed to persuade various people to put us, put our SIL up considerably higher than everybody else's around us, and I'm pleased to say that the examiner did accept our case for a higher level of SIL. I don't accept that this is going to damage the number of affordable homes, because that's why we reduced the affordable homes level from 40 to 30%, so that we could afford the infrastructure to develop the borough. Yes, it's, it is a fact obviously that a lot of people have in fact put through applications now, but this, remember this plan runs through till 2032, and although there will obviously be a review in a few years' time, I'm sure there are quite a lot of larger applications which will come through in due course. So, well done to the planning team for getting this SIL accepted, and let's hope we see the results. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the, with my Chairman of Environment, Overview and Scrutiny hat on, Madam Mayor, the Committee, Overview and Scrutiny Committee did look at this last week. We were of course well aware that to oppose or try and put in any changes to this would hold things up, and that is the very last thing that anyone would want to do. And we did note that the inspector in his report had made it perfectly clear that he did have some concerns in terms of affordability and a few issues, and that he would require that we are going to be reviewing this in three years' time, as much is likely to be necessary. I think everybody has some concerns about it, and I would echo the concerns of councillor Follows, because they are very real issues for us here. But we will have something in place hopefully to get some money in, and that's got to be better than nothing. I think we all accept it's not going to be perfect. It is a very broad brush, the system isn't perfect, but let's hope that this takes us closer to where we want to be and try and get some money from developers, and we will have to see how it works. And let's, let's very much hope that we can be very tight on developers when they are putting in their assessments claiming that they, they don't need to put any further, put any money into us. But yes, I would not recommend to anybody that they vote against this, even though it isn't a perfect, it's definitely not an exact science, this CIL. Thank you, Lady Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I, first of all, as portfolio holder, thank the planning team for all the hard work that they put into bringing this to this point, and also to thank councillor Hyman and the ONS environment team for the efforts that they put in into discussing this the other evening. I just wanted to address the issue of viability. The important thing to note is that, right from the start, a developer looking at a site now has an opportunity to determine what he will be asked to pay in SIL, rather than having to try and guess what he would have paid under section 106. As a result, when he's calculating the viability for the site, he knows what price he can pay for the land and still remain viable. In effect, it's now a tariff-based system. And certainly, the calculation of viability, there has recently been published a standardised method for the calculation of viability. And therefore, there should be no arguments of, well, we're doing it this way, and you're doing it that way, and we don't agree. There is to be one way of calculating viability. And so that should not become a problem. And I'd just like to quote from the budget from this week. Government confirms a simpler system of developer contributions that provide more certainty for developers and local authorities while enabling local areas to capture a greater share of uplift in land values for infrastructure and affordable housing. That's what this is about. That's why we're doing it. I commend this to you.
Thank you, councillor Storey. Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may first of all confess that I'm not particularly happy to be here this evening. I normally enjoy coming to these meetings, but this being Halloween, I'm in severe trouble with my grandchildren. I'm supposed to be at home handing out sweets to the local children, so I'm here under protest, and I will request that meetings like the London Future on Halloween. Coming to the subject of SIL, I was at a meeting yesterday evening of the Farm Society that the happiest local residents associations, and SIL came up with one of the subjects. And it was pointed out that the cost of, the additional cost of SIL on a small house in the farm, a 100 square metre house, would be approximately 45,000, and a 300 square metre house approximately 135,000. Now, everybody supports the infrastructure idea, everybody's very keen to have the infrastructure, but there was a concern expressed about the additional cost in housing. And I can actually see, I attend many of the appeals, and I know that councillor Coburn attends virtually them all, and what we see at each of these appeals is that the developers blaming Waverley for houses not being built. And I can just see in future the QC saying, one of the reasons the houses weren't built was because Waverley had this exceptionally high SIL charge. So just be aware of that, we're going to be blamed for this by the developers at appeals. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers? If not, then Leader, would you like to sum up?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll keep this brief, I think councillor Storey has summed up very well and hopefully outlined a little more detail the questions raised by councillor Follows. I think really what we need to remember is that the examiner did consider the fact that, you know, we are, are charging right at sort of the upper end in terms of SIL. He found this to be sound. This will be, as we've already said, the subject of an ongoing review, and reviewed sort of in three years. But ultimately, we owe it to our residents to make sure that, as a planning authority, we are giving our planners very clear direction, that they have this here, they have a structure here, and they have a tariff to work with, that absolutely to, to really emphasise the point, councillor Follows, that negotiation is, is critical in terms of making sure we do have affordable housing delivered, and we don't have developers trying to find a way, as he puts this sort of from, out of that. And that has to be key, and that has to be very clearly understood by the developers. There is a clear tariff, it's on our website, so they will be in no doubt, and we have to make sure that we also keep to our side and keep, keep that resolve very firmly, so that we can deliver the infrastructure that our residents and our communities want to see now and for the future. Madam Mayor, there are three recommendations under this item, and I commend them to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, the recommendations are set out on page two of the executive minutes. Are you happy to take them on block?
Yes.
Are those agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on to the Sweetman judgment and the requirement for a supplementary note on the Thames Basin Heath and Hindens avoidance strategy. Leader, would you like to introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report before you, members, deals with the necessary sort of procedural updates to the implementation of the two council avoidance strategies for developments within both the Thames Basin Heath Spa and the Hindhead avoidance strategy as well, following the Sweetman judgment that took place earlier this year. I'm not sure if there are speakers to this item, Madam Mayor, but that is all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any speakers? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this was again scrutinised at Environment ONS last week. When I say that, we spent well over two hours going through the local plan part two, and of course that's of no benefit to us this evening, and so had little time left for the other five or whatever agenda items that we had, that had been put on to our agenda. So we did not really have time to scrutinise this properly, members did not debate it. As chairman, I did outline the issues of my own concerns, and a couple of errors in the officer report were corrected, which is pleasing to see in what's come through. Unfortunately, the webcast from that meeting isn't available, this is very sad, it failed again, I gather, last night at the JPC, so if we can sort that out, please. To my knowledge, no record of last Monday's meeting, ONS meeting exists. Now, to avoid misunderstanding, I'd like to add that at the bottom of page 259 of the officer report, right at the very back, in front of the pink pages, about three pages in front, 259 at the bottom, you'll see that it says from, that the comments from ONS says that with the exception of the chairman, the committee was content that the approach to the, carrying out appropriate assessments as set out in the explanatory note reflected council advice following the Sweetman judgment. And you'll see on the previous page halfway up, at paragraph 1.4, it says that officers have reviewed the wording of the avoidance strategies and on the advice of council, written a supplementary note to update each strategy. Well, we asked for that advice, but we're told that it was verbal advice only, it isn't available. So please for clarity, it would be a good idea if you could note in the minutes that we, we as a committee could not have agreed with the council advice because it wasn't available, and so we don't want any, I wouldn't want any misunderstanding on that level. It is, I am concerned that we haven't adequately reflected the ruling in the simplicity of what has been put in front of us. It's disappointing that the ruling itself has not been included in our agenda papers, I find that somewhat perverse. We're being asked to make this decision blind, and I'm sure I'm not the only member here who doesn't like making decisions blind. I, of course, myself, have been through the judgments in some detail. This applies fully to us, it's hardly satisfactory. I can't agree that the proposed changes give clarity to developers, which is the intention. If that is our aim, we should either defer our decision, Madam Mayor, or, so that members can be properly informed, or we should add the necessary clarity, I think by quoting from the ruling, in a manner that no member and no decent barrister could possibly oppose. And so, Madam Mayor, rather than propose deferral at this stage, I would like to propose as an amendment or a motion, I don't know which is most appropriate, and I'd take your officer's advice on that, that the guidance to the developers be amended in addition to what's, to the simple statements that are here in the recommendation, that we would add the wording specifically from paragraphs 36 and 38 of the Sweetman ruling, in order to give the clarity that everybody needs. I've got those on a printed sheet, which is very simplified. May I read this out to you? It is that the additional wording would be, for affected developments within the visitor catchment areas of the Thames Basin Heath Spa and Weldon Heath Spas, a full and precise analysis of the measures capable of avoiding or reducing any significant effects on the site must be carried out, not at the screening stage but specifically at the stage of the appropriate assessment. And, Madam Mayor, the wording from paragraph 38 as well. Can we please put that up? May I move that that is taken on your advice as an amendment or as a motion, and confirm that the words, and ask officers to confirm that those are the words, because obviously you don't have them in the papers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I'm not, I just, we'll have to, if you are proposing an amendment, then perhaps you might wish to repeat those words in your six minutes, because that was a bit rushed, and I'm not quite sure I understood what you were saying.
I was working to the clock, Madam Mayor, unfortunately. And it wasn't six minutes, was it? It will be, but I wanted to put the motion into obviously what I was proposing.
Yes, well, in the future, perhaps you could make it clear from the outset that you're wanting to propose an amendment so that we can get to it in good time. So are you proposing an amendment, then?
Yes, I thought I made that clear, sorry.
Right. So if you are going to move an amendment, you have six minutes to move that amendment. But you don't have to use the full six minutes if you don't wish to.
Well... Does he have, does he have a seconder?
And councillor MacLeod has got some scaring people jobs to do, hasn't he? He's got to go out and scare some children, I gather, so we want to get him. I do have this, I, right. Am I in the six minutes? No, I'm not. I've got this on a sheet of paper, so we can stick it up on the...
No, no, it's not now.
Yes, may I ask for a seconder, please? But we haven't got the motion up there yet, so it's difficult to second it, but I have...
Well, I don't see anyone jumping up.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
You've got your six minutes now. Or no, you've got your five and a half, yeah.
That's okay. It shouldn't take that long. I have, shall I bring it over? Because I've put it in writing. I'm sorry, I'm not, okay. The addition, the additional wording would be, for affected developments within the visitor catchment areas of the Thames Basin Heath Spa and the Weldon Heath Spas, open parentheses, open quotation marks, a full and precise analysis of the measures capable of avoiding or reducing any significant effects on the site concerned must be carried out, not at the screening stage but specifically at the stage of the appropriate assessment. And the assessment, again quoting from, this time from paragraph 38, may not have lacunae and, which means gaps, and must contain complete, precise and definitive findings and conclusions capable of removing all scientific, reasonable scientific doubt as to the effects of the proposed works on the protected site concerned, in accordance with paragraphs 36 and 38 of the People Overwind Sweetman ruling, case 323 oblique 17.
Okay, we'll put this up on the screen, so that everyone can look at it.
I have a second sheet of paper which does just quote, that does have the judgment itself there, so...
Well, you might want to pass that around, because putting it up there, no one's going to be able to read it.
What I'd like obviously is for officers to just confirm that those are the words taken directly from the Sweetman judgment, and of course it should be in front of us in the papers, but it isn't. So those are direct quotes from the, and I'm quite happy to give this to the monitoring officer if he wishes to take a, take a quick look to check. But if we're looking for compliance with the Sweetman judgment, it would be a good idea if officers had the wording in front of them. It would be better if members had it in front of them.
Mr. Jones, would you have any, can you confirm to us whether that is the exact language? I'd like to be quite clear on that, because I wouldn't want us to adopt any language that isn't spot on.
I've got the case in front of me, so it will take just a minute or two just to...
Thank you. Take your time.
Thank you.
So we can continue now with the amendment while that's being checked. Are you finished now?
No, it's only, only to say that this, what we're trying to do tonight supposedly is to give the clarity to developers, so that they know what hurdles they have to overcome, what is necessary, and what the Sweetman ruling says, because that is the whole point of this. And I've tried to add something which, obviously as it comes from the, directly from the ruling, it tells developers exactly what it is in the, in the legal terms that they have to satisfy.
I think we have a point of order. No, sorry, I beg your pardon.
Now, in, in as, in as much as it comes directly from the ruling, I've tried to make it obviously so that no one can possibly object to it, no member can object to us actually putting in what it says in the, in the judgment, unless they've got ulterior motives, I suppose. And of course, no one, no, no decent barrister is going to object to us or would advise us not to put in some wording from, that comes directly from the ruling, if we're trying to clarify it for the developers, which is our aim. So it's very simple, if we were to add that...
That's not the nature of debate, Mr. Hyman, councillor Hyman. If people choose not to want to do it, they don't have to do it because you say so.
No, no, I'm sorry, but if our, if our lawyers would also confirm that in accordance with Habitat's Regulation 9, I'm sure that is of the 2017 regulations as well as the 2011 ones which we've been used to quoting from, we must consider the directive in the conduct of our business. So if we're putting together or amending an avoidance strategy, Madam Mayor, then we do have to consider this, and we have to abide by the law. So I don't think we've actually got that choice, Madam Mayor, but if lawyers would clarify that for you, I'd be very happy. Thank you.
Do we have a seconder? Does the seconder wish to speak now?
Yes, Madam Mayor, very, very briefly.
You have four minutes.
Yeah, I will be very brief on this subject. The reason, the reason I am supporting an amendment of this character is because we have had this discussion on many, many, many occasions in many different forums, whether it be the Environment ONS or it be the JPC. I think it's one of those issues where it would be more efficient for us all in the long run if what we have in this document tonight adequately reflects the judgment, and so to actually copy this text directly from the judgment and import it into the text of our own policy would once and for all absolutely clarify this point going forward. Because I know some of us here have had some frustrations with some of the issues that councillor Hyman has brought forward, but that in no way has diminished in many cases, that he actually does have a good point to make. And so I think by importing the judgment's wording specifically into the policy that we're proposing tonight, we will unequivocally avoid any further issues on the subject. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right, I have other speakers, and we're speaking, may I remind them on the amendment? Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor. I would not be supporting this. Quite frankly, it may be that I've been away so long that I'm not used to the debate that goes on in this chamber, and if I might say so, I haven't understood a word that councillor Hyman has said. We actually have a thing up there, and what I'm concerned about is whether in fact we are trying to change the minutes of the executive to suit the ONS. I do not know what it is we're trying to do. So if somebody could explain that succinctly and slowly, I would be eternally grateful. Thank you.
Right, well, there will be that opportunity when the mover sums up. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting the amendment. As a retired solicitor, you may be surprised that I actually like to keep things simple and to keep the wording down as much as possible, despite the reputation that lawyers may have. By changing, by, the proposal is set by the executive where we're changing the wording, which incidentally has been approved by our officers, which would include our legal department and SIL, Queen's Council, does seem to me to be the first thing to note. What worries me, well, also developers know about Sweetman, and if they haven't, then they shouldn't be deserved to be developers. To then spell out what the Sweetman case says by putting in various paragraphs seems to me just clogs the issue. They can look up what Sweetman says if they have any doubt about it, and, and if we always, with every rule we have, recite pages and pages of the law as to why we've done it, you know, our documents are going to be so long that they won't even be read. I think setting out the structure of how matters should proceed simply, which is what the executive are proposing, does seem to me eminently sensible, and that we don't get bogged down in another 1, 2, 3, 12 or 13 lines of print. And therefore, I won't be supporting this amendment for that reason.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I shall not be supporting this for very many of the same reasons that councillor Goodrich has just outlined. You can't pick and choose on a judgment like this. The judgment exists, it's there, and as councillor Goodrich says, many of us have read it, and if we haven't read it, we've heard QC's, opposing QC's, interpret it in slightly different ways to make a case. That's what planning judgment, well, what a legal judgment like this, we see the judgment, we then go and take legal advice as how to incorporate it into our own documents. We don't do the two things together, you know, the advice stands as advice, it's a legal judgment, and we have to be aware of it, and we have to take advice from our officers on that judgment. But the idea that you can pick and choose a few words out of a judgment to bolster any of our documents just makes it as... of our documents just makes it, as councillor Goodrich says, not only a wieldy but also unsafe. You know, we have had advice based on the judgment, and that is all we as a council can do. This judgment is talked about solidly at all current appeals in the areas that are affected by any zone of influence of a spar or a SAC. And, and as councillor Goodrich also said, any person that's going to appeal, any developer, has a whole suite of people interpreting Sweetman and what they have to do under the law. So really and truly, it's not up to us to put one or two phrases out of a, a long judgment into our documentation. It doesn't make any sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Any other speakers? If not, then we will ask the mover, councillor Hyman, to sum up. You have four minutes.
I'm sorry, can we have the response, please, from our legal team in respect of confirming that that is the operative wording from the judgment? And, and also tell us whether there is any good reason not to add that clarification before I, because we need the officer advice on this, I think.
Mr. Jones.
Firstly, I can confirm that it does accurately reflect the wording in the judgment, paragraphs 36 and 38, part of 38, not 38 in its entirety, but the relevant parts are included. In terms of whether there's any good reason not to include it, I certainly would recommend members stick with the recommendation in the, in the report. It adequately deals with the ramifications from Sweetman in that it requires appropriate assessments to be carried out. I personally, in my judgment, can't see any good reason to include these particular passages in the avoidance strategy. As members have said, applicants will be aware of the judgment, they'll be aware of what it says. I don't think it's necessary to include these passages. These passages talk about how an appropriate assessment should be carried out, whereas the changes that we're trying to bring into effect are more technical in nature and deal with when mitigation can be considered. And the judgment says that mitigation can only be considered at the appropriate assessment stage, and that's precisely what these changes have been brought into, they're being brought into, bring into effect those changes specifically. So my recommendation would be not to change it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I obviously cannot agree, or I wouldn't have brought this forward, but the issues that have been brought up by councillor Goodrich, he said it's a lengthy document and we don't want to make it any longer. Well, actually, the avoidance strategy is already a lengthy document and should be longer because it should actually tell people what the law is that we're trying to get around and we're trying to satisfy by, by having an avoidance strategy. He said the developers know full well. Well, unfortunately, I mean, that's, that's wrong, plain wrong, because what this judgment has said, what the ruling has plainly said, is that Natural England and Waverley and all the other people who are interpreting the law over the past 11 years here, these 11 years since 2007, since the avoidance strategy was first adopted as a mini-plan, it's been done wrongly, and we have to change what we're doing. And that doesn't involve just changing a couple of words, saying you've got to do it at a different stage. The whole point of this is, and it was recognized in the, in the power Sweetman judgment at paragraphs 20 and 21, that in, in, in their case, they're in Ireland, the mitigation had not been assessed, there had been no detailed study of the mitigation. That's exactly the same situation as we have here. What we have here in Parnham Park is an avoidance strategy which is based on an imaginary car park, imaginary mitigation, which is ever expandable, and, you know, people should know that we have to have an assessment that shows the extent to which that and the complementary SAM strategies, the Strategic Access Management and Monitoring that Natural England do, that those are completely, that we need to know that those work. So as far as picking and choosing, no, this is the, the whole point of this modification, the whole point of the judgment, is that we need to advise people what an appropriate assessment is, what assessment must be conducted. So I would like a recorded vote on this, if possible, because to object to putting in some, to object to putting in wording from, which is the clarification that developers need, where there isn't any guidance at the moment, this is guidance. We don't have to publish this at all, we don't have to put in any doubt of guidance if we're going to say, of course, developers all know what the law is, we don't need to tell them. That seems to be the point that's being made to me. Well, no, clearly, they do need to know. This judgment has changed the way we do things. The judgment says that we can no longer simply assume that mitigation is effective and decide we're not going to bother assessing it. We have to assess it. We are not allowed to decide it's okay without assessing it. Does that not make sense? Now, you know, what I'm being told by the objectors here is that, no, we've got to carry on pretending that this mitigation is effective, we're not going to assess it. We mustn't, we mustn't assess this, whatever we do, we've all got to come to our decisions here tonight and at every planning meeting without any assessment whatsoever. The law is all about having to conduct an assessment. I'd like those words in there, and anyone who's got a conscience, please, vote to put those in. I'd like a recorded vote on this, please, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
We've had advice from our own, our own lawyers, and we've heard from, we've had a good debate, so, you know, I would like to take it to a vote. We were being asked for a recorded vote. Have we got five members to support a recorded vote, or are we happy to do a show of hands? All right, then, therefore, we will move to the recommendation that the council agrees the changes proposed in paragraphs 2 and 3 of the executive agenda report that will be incorporated into a supplementary note to each of the avoidance strategies. All those in favor, may I have... Oh, sorry, we're voting on the amendment, I beg your pardon. They're voting on the amendment, those in favor. Those opposed? Oh, sorry, we have to do it again. Those in favor? Those opposed? That amendment is lost. So we will return to the main debate. Leader, is there anything you would like to add? Or does anyone want to speak on the main, on the main item, or have we heard enough? Councillor Beeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try and be a bit more quick as it were. As all members are fully aware, implementation of the recent Sweetman judgment of the Habitat directives has led to claims that Waverley have been acting illegally when deciding of reading the past planning applications. This is, however, in my opinion, only an interpretation of a law, and as I think as we all know, the law in most situations is many shades of grey rather than stark black and white. It is proposed to rectify Waverley's current position by making some minor changes to the wording of the existing avoidance strategy and undertaking appropriate assessments for each planning application affected. Does this, however, make everything right? Both members and officers need to be very careful of relying too much and accepting without question the perceived wisdom of Natural England, whose specific responsibilities include promoting nature conservation and protecting biodiversity. Just because Natural England says okay, this does not in itself mean that the decision is right. As an example, I would draw attention to members of a recent planning application to allow construction of eight flats within 400 metres of the Thames Basin Heath Spar because Natural England advised that the entrance to the development lies just outside the 400-metre boundary. Whilst this may well be a strict interpretation, it defies any logic that any such development can be within its true spirit of conservation. Now, don't get me wrong, since I do understand and appreciate there were some developments that would result in some environmental loss, but would yield greater benefits to others. Natural England, as like many government organizations, face cuts in its budget, reduced by 44% since it was established in 2006, which have reduced its ability to independently discharge its duties. It is under-resourced and has had to abandon its regulatory powers in favour of voluntary agreements which have little or no weight. They provided with inadequate ecology reports, many of which are undertaken by consultants paid for by developers. I understand that the current planning application for Arons Hill has, through the commissioning of an independent ecology report, revealed that the ecology report submitted with the planning application significantly placed down the impact on the environment. It seems rather ironic that the Sweetman judgment will result in Natural England having to stretch its already limited resources to now also review appropriate assessments. So from initial responses from Natural England, it seems clear that this has created, we get more work for no benefit, since the standard response seems to be, and I quote from an application, "Natural England have no comments to make on this application as long as the relevant avoidance and mitigation measures specified in the appropriate assessment are secured." As a mitigation measure, there's no clear evidence that provision of SANG actually works, but then again, there's no clear evidence that it doesn't work. Indeed, the fact that it's so complex that to ever prove there's any shadow of doubt that whether any particular SANG provides adequate maintenance, any SANG provides mitigation for development. But if you are not careful, I appreciate you will end up being prevented from doing anything at all and this will result in stagnation and the death of our communities. All I'd like our members and officers to be aware is that because Natural England says okay, one should not be lulled into any sense of false security. To undertake the duties properly, National, Natural England should deserve to be funded adequately and fairly. The Chancellor has found additional financial resources to help small businesses and to help try and save local high streets. If financial resources can be made available for such objectives, then there's no reason why sufficient financial resources should not also be found to ensure that the current planning system can work as it should. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Beeman. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Goodrich.
Madam Mayor, just a comment, and I don't know if the leader will accept the logic of this. When one's looking at page 258 on the amendments to Thames Basin Heath's avoidance strategy, we are crossing out the words appropriate assessment bracket AA, and then two lines down, we're putting in AA without a definition. I just wonder, instead of AA, we should insert the words appropriate assessment. I think it would read better, and I don't know whether the leader would accept that as a bit of better drafting.
Can we do that? Right, we would need a seconder to amend that, so would anyone be happy to second that? Okay, yes, okay, take your pick. Councillor Gray, thank you. So do we vote on that amendment? Does anyone want to debate whether we change AA to appropriate assessment?
Okay, it's Alcoholics Anonymous.
No, come on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I find it rather perverse that we, we are voting, we're all intending to vote, it appears, to make sure that we get a couple of words right here, but we're going to completely ignore the law.
Under point of order, Madam Mayor, I resent that I or any other member of this council are disobeying the law. I think that is totally wrong, and I'm not prepared to accept that.
Point of personal explanation, Madam Mayor, the Sweetman judgment says that this council has been ignoring the law for the past 11 years.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to withdraw that because we do have members of the legal profession in this council, and that is a direct insult to them, so I would ask you to withdraw that.
I'm sorry, it's no insult. All our staff here have inherited this, a lot of our members have inherited this from 11 years ago.
I beg to disagree with you.
The statement's correct.
I think we all agree that there has been a statement here, a public statement made by councillor Hyman, that this council is not obeying the law. So for the third time, councillor Hyman, I will ask you to withdraw that statement because it is wrong. This council is a law-abiding council, and I would ask you to withdraw that.
I don't know that I said is, Madam Chairman, because in the context of what we're doing here, we are supposedly changing, but I do apologize. Yes, I must stand. As far as this is concerned, the Sweetman judgment, the whole purpose of having this in front of us is because the council accepts that we have not been addressing the law correctly, have not been interpreting it correctly for 11 years.
We don't need another four minutes, councillor Hyman. We don't need another four minutes. If you do not wish to withdraw your statement, we will move on now.
Thank you.
And we will just, and we will record that you have made that statement, and the, this will have been recorded anyway, so we take note. And I do not wish to hear anything about this council behaving unlawfully again, unless there is evidence and supported by council to do so. So, moving on to the amendment, I would like to vote on the amendment to change AA to, sorry, what was it now, appropriate assessment. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I would like to return to the main debate now. Do we have any speakers on that? Councillor Follows.
Sorry, extremely quick. The application that councillor Beeman was referring to, I think, also highlights a need at some point to consider the actual weight we give to bodies like Natural England because they do not have the resource to actually process what they are being asked to do, and this judgment effectively asks them to do more. In JPCs, we frequently rely on their judgment in order to make decisions, and actually, I think we need to start recognizing that they do not have the capacity to actually make those assessments properly. As we found with the application that councillor Beeman was referring to, you can effectively buy in an opinion to contradict or to justify Natural England or refute them at any point, thus completely undermining the process. So I would just like to say, I hope in future joint planning committees and other planning committees, we perhaps consider the weight we give to Natural England in these circumstances. Thank you.
Any other comments? Leader, would you like to sum up?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I think everything that needs to be said has been said, and I commend these recommendations to council. Thank you.
Thank you, leader. The recommendation is that council agrees the changes proposed in paragraph 2 and 3 of the executive agenda as amended, and that will be incorporated into a supplementary note to each of the avoidance strategies. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We now move to part 2 items. I have two speakers registered on the part 2 item on the procurement of the waste recycling and street cleaning contract. Before I call on you, please remember that part of the executive report was in exempt, and depending on what you wish to say, the council may need to go into exempt. So the first speaker I have is on executive 4618, councillor Beeman.
Very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'll be very quick, you're pleased to hear. I put my name down to speak because I wanted to hear, first of all, the executive committee itself, which I attended as an observer, and I'm pleased to say that I would fully support the recommendations before you. I think the job that they do is exemplary, and I would like to echo the points made by councillor King today, actually, in the executive committee, that the work they do is actually excellent.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank councillor Beeman for his congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Very well said. Leader, is there anything else you would like to add?
Whilst we're thanking everyone, and I will keep it very brief, can I just also extend my thanks? I think the report speaks for itself, but let's be clear, this is a service that affects all our residents across the borough. It's really important that we get it right. What we have got... delivers, not just in terms of budget, but actually in terms of quality and customer service, which is so important for all our residents and our community borough-wide. I'd also just like to take this opportunity to thank the overview and scrutiny committee, the working task group as well, and all the officers who work so hard on this. It's been a huge piece of work, and they've done a really great job, so my thanks to them all, and I commend this to council. Thank you.
So that concludes your minutes. Yes?
Madam Mayor, it does conclude my minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, leader. Item four on the agenda is committee memberships. This is, item is just for the council to note, that councillor Pritchard has resigned from the audit committee, and councillor Robert Knowles has been appointed to fill the vacancy on the committee. Is that noted, everyone?
Yes.
So there are no exempt items to consider. Thank you all for attending, and the meeting of the council is now closed.